And ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the November 22nd County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones and the meeting documents are on the back corner. And if you're going to speak on a non-agenda item, if you'd please sign up with your name and address and announce yourself when you're at the podium with your county of residence instead of your complete address. I will just let the listening public know we have two commissioners present here and two online today. It's just the way things worked out. I think I set a new record on this one too as being chairman over only two commissioners present. So, one more thing to add to my stack of things that have happened. With that, I would look for, is there anyone that would like to move anything off the consent agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, Sheriff's Office, requesting that if you can move consent agenda item 8B, the law enforcement services agreement off the consent into the regular business, please.
Okay, thank you. I'd look for a motion. Do we need a motion? We do not need a motion, but Commissioner Bender.
I would make a motion that we move that item to immediately following item 15 on our agenda instead of to the end of the agenda.
I have a motion to move that item to immediately following 15. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Commissioner Benega. Now we'll have roll call vote. Bender.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth? Commissioner Barth? Barth?
I said aye, sorry.
Okay, okay. Hi Burger. Aye. Motion passes unanimously and that's to place it. And then I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with a roll call or motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a second from Commissioner Barth. Roll call vote, please. Bender.
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hi Burger. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Let's see. And now I need a motion to approve the agenda as, is that the one I did? I don't think so, as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Barth. Roll call vote. Bender.
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hi Burger. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I think I got all those motions. Okay. Now we'll move on to regular business. And item number 10 is a briefing on the Facility Task Force review for juvenile justice center project.
Good morning, Tyler Clatt, Commission Office. So, the Facilities Task Force, which was originally created in 2019 to provide some recommendations for future steps the county should make related to capital projects. As part of that review, the task force reviewed the Sally, or recommended a Sallyport and other improvements to the courtroom at the juvenile detention center. The Commission has now requested that the Facilities Task Force review the proposed juvenile justice center project and provide their feedback. This group, three of the members at least, met on 10/24 to review the different presentations that have been provided for the juvenile justice project. Then, that video, a video was taken of that and shared with the rest of the group and the rest of the group also reviewed that information. All group members were able to provide feedback related to the task force's mission of reviewing this project. One member did abstain as they're a member of the actual project team designing the facility. So actually, Mr. Bob Timian is here from the Facilities Task Force and I'm gonna let him walk you through their comments.
Thank you, Tyler.
Good morning, Bob Timian.
Good morning.
A member of the task force. And I think the item that we need to start with is that the assumption was that Minnehaha County has determined this facility is a priority. I think that's the thing we've did with all the facilities. We didn't list to prioritize, but just say if you're gonna do this, these are things that we would see should be done. As we look at this, it is abundantly clear that there are multiple deficiencies in the current facility. Things have changed since it was built. That's how things are done and everything else. The remodel option would be disruptive to implement, make it difficult for staff to maintain safety and the required quality of life the county is responsible to maintain. The option to construct a brand-new facility makes the most sense.
Very solid recommendation. So, thank you.
Yep. And Commissioner Barth shook his head no he didn't have a comment. And I would just say too that when we, when this task force met years ago to look at our other facilities, they looked at the juvenile detention center, but they were instructed to only look at the Sallyport and only look at the court spaces. And recognizing as they quickly toured that building at that point, we had a huge problem as there, but other things to address. So, they already realized at that point we were gonna be here very soon, so.
It was, it was interesting going through the hallways and seeing what was there and how the building was structured. It would make a lot of sense to be able to move some walls and change some dimensions. But that is where I think the new construction couldn't do enough to renovate it to really bring it up to what is there. And if you did that, it would be a Band-Aid that might get you through for a few years, but isn't really a good long-term solution for that. But I have to say, going into it, I did not know what a Sallyport was.
Pardon me, say that again.
It's 2019, going before that, I'd never heard of the term Sallyport.
Right.
But as I hear that term coming up in other conversations, I now, I now know what a Sallyport is.
You're not the only one that didn't know what that was. We get that question a lot, so, yes.
And I want to say thank you to my fellow members of this, that the work that went in there, how we went through it, being able to have our conversations, and the use of technology today made it much easier to do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep. And again, I would say thank you to the whole committee because really, they came together very quickly as we're trying to get this on the agenda for a decision in December. And so, this task force jumped right on it and helped us out. So, appreciate it very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that has a comment on this presentation? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 11, which consider a motion to approve an eight-hour, eight hours of holiday pay benefit on December 23rd, 2022. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is a request to consider to declare eight hour, to declare December 23rd, 2022 as a holiday pay benefit. In 2022, Christmas falls on Sunday with Minnehaha County offices being closed on Monday, December 26th. We've noted that the state of South Dakota, the unified judicial system, and the city of Sioux Falls have all declared Friday, December 23rd, as a holiday. And so, would just bring that forward for your consideration to go through and declare that as a holiday also for employees.
When state offices don't work, it makes work here in the county very cumbersome and difficult because some of the computer systems are shut down. And so, some stuff honestly can't happen. So, Commissioner.
I did, I was gonna make a similar comment and just, I think that given the fact that the city and the state will be closed that day and that there's likely to be actual few citizens looking for business that day, and because our staff all work very hard and there's very limited ability on our part to recognize their service, they don't even get like a coupon for a turkey or anything. And so, I think this is a small thing that we can do to recognize their service.
Commissioner Barth, do you have any comments? Commissioner Benega, do you have any comments?
No, I think it's been well described.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Okay, I'd look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, Benega.
I have a motion and a second with Benega. Roll call vote, please. Bender.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth? Hi Burger. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is consider a motion to approve an extension of the retention bonuses for select law enforcement-related actions, positions, excuse me, through 123123. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. You'll probably remember this program was implemented early in 2022 in an effort to reduce the turnover in some of our critical law enforcement positions. What it basically is, is a $1,000 bonus given at nine-month intervals for the first three years with a maximum earning of $4,000. The whole goal behind the program was to try and reduce the turnover in those key positions. I think it's been effective, but to be honest, 11 to 12 months of time is probably not enough to fully evaluate the program, particularly since we've done some other things in that nine-to-10-month period. So, we're asking your approval to go ahead and continue this into 2023. So, for any employees who are hired up through the end of 2023, we think this will give us a better chance to evaluate really how viable the program is. But I do want to point out that it's currently funded with ARPA funds. If this is approved, this would be the first time that maybe we're looking at having to pick up some of the cost with general funds. Since this is a three-year track, it would make people eligible into 2026 if they were hired during 2023. So, I just want you to be aware that there's that potential cost.
Okay. Comments from the Commission? Commissioner Bender?
Well, I'm supportive of this. I mean, I think the, sometimes the good news is that we have a 1.5% unemployment rate and that's also the very bad news. I mean, it's not that we have, it's not that the hiring environment has gotten tremendously easier. And there's a tremendous amount of effort and expense that goes into bringing on new employees in this system. And so, I think that it's money well spent personally. And I do think it's had some impact just by the less turnover that we've seen. And so, I'm very supportive of this.
Commissioner Barth, do you have a comment?
No, I don't.
Okay. Commissioner Benega?
No, we're good.
Okay. I'd look for, oh, is there any public comment on this item? Look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barth. Roll call vote, please. Bender.
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hi Burger. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is consider a motion to approve an extension to the COVID sick leave through December 22nd, 23, or until the CDC isolation guidelines are lowered, whichever comes sooner.
This is another program that was funded with ARPA in January of 2022. You might recall at that point in time, we had several cases of COVID. Thankfully, our COVID cases have gone down, but we found this to be a very beneficial program. Our employees have a paid time off due to turnover levels. We know that a lot of our employees are fairly new and haven't had time to accrue much paid time off. And this is really helpful particularly for individuals who are required to isolate under the CDC guidelines. So, we're asking your consideration to extend this into 2023. Again, if those isolation guidelines change, that could have an impact on maybe the approach. So, that's why we're asking for it to be extended through the end of next year, or if the isolation guidelines change, then we would suggest that we revisit it.
Comments from the Commission? Commissioner Bender?
Once again, I'm supportive of this. I mean, I think like everybody, I would just assume never to hear the word COVID again in my lifetime. But I do think that it's a program that has been useful for the employees that need it. There's a check and balance in the system to make sure that people are accountable, that the leave is used responsibly and for the purpose intended. And so, I think that it makes sense for the county all the way around. We don't want sick people to come to work. I think that might be one of the unintended consequences of COVID is that folks are more aware that coming to work, just like we're very thankful that Commissioner Benega is on Zoom today because none of the rest of us want flu before we intermingle with all of our family for Thanksgiving. So, I think this makes sense and I am supportive.
Commissioner Barth, do you have any comments? Okay. He said no. And Commissioner Benega, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, thanks.
Okay. Anyone from the community that would, or the audience with a comment? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
I would make a motion to approve.
Need a motion? I need a second?
I definitely second that.
Okay. Commissioner Benega, roll call vote. Bender.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hi Burger. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is consider a motion to approve a health and dental premium holiday for December 15th, 2022. Carrie, again.
I am really happy to be bringing this before you today. You might recall from several years ago, I think it's been about six years since we've been able to have a conversation like this. But we've been in a very fortunate position that the amount of premiums that we've taken in in 2022 is, in essence, are greater than the costs that we've incurred in the plan year. So, that's good news. And when we think we have enough extra money in that health fund reserve, which is funded by those premiums, that's when we start looking at the potential for a premium holiday. Based on our current year's claims cost, our past year's claims class, what we're shooting for is about four to four-and-a-half million dollars in that reserve fund. And we have more than enough, or rather, we wanted 3.8 to four, and we have over four-and-a-half right now. So, we're requesting your approval of a health premium holiday for December 15th. That has a cost, and I say "cost" with air quotes because all it is is just a reduction in revenue of about $328,000, which is ideal. The good news is that saves the county, that premium portion, and good news for employees that it saves them their premium reduction for December 15th.
So, it's just not reduced from their check. Commissioner Bender, any comments? Hooray. Any comments from Commissioner Barth or Commissioner Barth and Commissioner Benega? And none from Commissioner?
Make a motion to approve?
I have a motion.
A second?
And a motion and a second. Is there any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hi Burger. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 15, authorize the chair to sign the Department, the South Dakota DOT Utilities and Right-of-Way Certificates for Project MC22-13-structure-50-330-026, the rehab. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Steve Groh on Highway Superintendentate. We were successful in getting big funds to rehabilitate a structure on Highway 103 North Assherman. One of the requirements is we need the Commission to give the DOT assurance that we've required all necessary easements and that the DOT will not be responsible for utility relocates. We're only gonna have temporary easements on this project and there will be no utility relocations required.
Comments?
Steve, do you mind just for viewing public who may not have ever heard of a big program, explain what that is, how that works?
Bridge improvement grants where the state issues local agencies' monies to replace or repair, rehabilitate bridges. There's various percentages. This is an 80% DOT, 20% local match.
Thank you.
Great news for our taxpayers, really.
Yes.
Commissioner Barth, do you have any comments?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Bart, Benega, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. I'd look for, is there any public comment? Look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, Benega.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hi Burger. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now, we will move down to item number 20, which was moved up in our agenda, which is authorize the chairman to sign a 2023 law enforcement services agreement for eight communities within Minnehaha County. Joe Bosman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman. Thank you again for this opportunity to clarify a clerical error that was on our commission memo. For those in the public that are looking at the commission packet for the memo, the far-right column with the dollar amounts for our contract services with our small towns should have read 2023 at the top, not 2022. So, this is my opportunity to sit there and ask for your approval to sign the law enforcement services agreements for the eight communities in Minnehaha County, which the Sheriff's Office provides law enforcement services for. That's an annual renewal that speaks volumes to the support and the interactions that we have with these communities. Captain Zisk is in the office with our patrol division. He has done a great job getting our deputies and our school resource officers to be a part of these communities. And we've had no negative feedback whatsoever with the services we're providing them.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Any comments for Joe? Okay. This was just a clerical error, so I would look for, any comments from the community or the audience? None? I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second, Benega.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hi Burger. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Joe. Our next four agenda items are all presentations. In the late part of the year, we have our nonprofits come in and we offer them a time to give us a short presentation about what they're doing. It just lines us up for next year when we will be doing budgeting for the county. It gives us an idea of different programs that we're supporting and how they are beneficial to our taxpayers. So, with that said, I will go on to item number 16, which is the County Ambulance Service Provider's Presentation. Good morning.
Excellent. Well, welcome. Thank you guys for having us here and allowing us to speak. I think the last time we were able to get in front of you was like pre-pandemic times. So, we appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you today. My name's Ryan Sidik with the Dora Rapids Ambulance. And this year, in 2022, is definitely proving to be a busy year for us. It's probably gonna be our busiest year on record in our over 40 years of service to Minnehaha County. If we are not at or above 500 requests for service this year, I'll be surprised. Staffing-wise, we continue to be stable as far as staffing goes. But I wouldn't, I would also maybe classify us as fragile. And I think that any industry right now is probably in that same boat. But in a, in an industry where you have to have coverage 24 hours a day, seven days a week, it's not like you can just close your store and, you know, not have the service available that day. So, I, like I said, our staffing-wise, we're stable right now, but we're definitely fragile. And I think I could speak for all of us when I say that we're probably only one or two people away from being into trouble. We've been able to secure quite a bit of grant money over the last couple of years to help provide some needed equipment. However, grants don't cover our biggest need, which is staffing and salaries and payroll. Our billing side, several years ago, we brought our billing back in-house and started a small billing company just to help offset our costs. And that billing company has grown here. We're now billing for three services. Most recently, we included Garrettson into our, under that realm. And we're excited to be able to keep that money here in the county as well, you know, keep all that money local and support each other. We also are working with the state. Dora Rapids here was the first to get the telehealth equipment installed in their ambulance. And again, that's a great piece, a great tool, but doesn't necessarily help on the staffing side of things. But it's a great tool for us to have. And we just started using those services here last week. We're also working with Garrettson Ambulance currently to work on the Community Healthcare Worker Program to grant through the state of South Dakota to help at-risk people get the services that they need. And so, we're currently working, Dora Rapids and Garrettson are working together on that project in our communities. We'll see how that plays out here as we start that program up here at the first of the year. I would say, lastly here, that the state of South Dakota currently also is working on some regionalization grants. And I think as we look forward to the stability of our county ambulance, that might be a prime opportunity for us to develop some ideas and programs and get some seed money to maybe get something else started here to really firm up our emergency services here in the county. And that's something that the three of us continue to look at and continue to have conversations about on what is gonna be most feasible for us, so.
Thank you.
Curtis Nelson, I'm Director Garrettson Ambulance. So, I'll echo a lot of what Ryan said. We're coming off our busiest year ever, 2021. We saw over 220 calls for service, which is the busiest we've ever been. And we're on track to probably match that this year as well. It's been a busy year. Staffing, as Ryan said, the word I would use is tenuous. We're keeping the doors open, but it's, you know, as Ryan said, it's harder and harder. We're in this transition from what traditionally was a volunteer service. We don't have the volunteers that we used to. And so, the industry as a whole in the state and in the country is dealing with the same thing. And so, we don't, we don't have the staffing for a full-time service. We don't have the volunteers for a part-time service. So, we're trying to walk that line. And it's been years in the making. We've been adjusting as we go. And so, we're, we're doing okay. We're have, we've got about 20 people on our roster. We've lost a few. We've gained a few. We did a class last year where we were able to pick up some new EMTs. And so, we're just continuing to work on the staffing piece. That's our biggest challenge, has been for some time. We were able to replace our ambulance last year, which was, was huge. We were able to leverage some COVID funding to offset some of our other expenses. So, we were able to replace our 20-plus-year-old truck with a brand-new truck that hopefully will last us another 20 years. So, the other big thing that we've been working through is the state radio system. I know the Commission is well aware of that project with the state radios. We appreciate the funding that the Commission provided for replacing some of our radios. We've been able to leverage grant funds and other savings to be able to replace that. So, hopefully, when the switchover happens next year, we'll be ready to do so. And I think I'll stop there.
Thanks, Curtis.
Morning, Commissioners. Tim Even with Humboldt Fire and Ambulance Service. Just kind of a broad overview of what Humboldt's been up to in the last couple of years. Like I said, it's been a little while since we've had a chance to come down and visit with you. We as well put in a new ambulance in service in April of '21. With that, we also picked up what they call a power-load cot with that. Kind of does the lifting forest-type thing, but yeah, not cheap. They come in at about $40,000 just for that cot system. So, an added benefit to our, our members on the department, but we thought it was well worth the money. 2020 was probably, was our busiest year that we have ever had. At that time, you know, we've been around probably a little over 50 years now. We were probably looking at, I think it was right around 340 calls for service that year. Last year dropped off a little bit. We were just a little over 300. This year now, to date, we just went over 300 as of this morning. So, I think we're probably gonna be pushing right close to one of our busiest years as well. Other notable things, just like Ryan had mentioned, Humboldt is also on the pilot program for the telehealth. That's gonna be a nice feature, I guess, for the folks in the back of the ambulance. But again, you gotta staff the ambulance in order to use that. Currently, we're running with eight advanced life support people on staff. And with that, we have 12 EMT basic volunteers, I guess you'd say. We as well, like I said, we're constantly looking for grant money. The big push has been lately to get ready for the P-25. I think to date, we're probably around 22 of our radios that we have needed have been purchased through grant money. Those things are at a cost of $5,000 to $6,000 a piece. So, big chunk of money that we're always on the hunt. And we're not just at your doorstep. We're bugging everybody, so. And with that also, over the past couple of years now, we always try to do a training opportunity with ourselves and as well as other communities. In the last three years, we've did training with Montrose, Colton, and Hartford. And when we do a mock drill, we've got a couple of guys on our department that really get into it. We, we actually, we bring buses in and wreck them and, yeah, and all kinds of patients, language barriers. We bring law enforcement in. Helicopters are involved. So, when we do it, we go big. And it's been well-received by the other communities, I guess, that trained with us. They're very appreciative of it. So, I guess with that, I'd like to thank the Commission for all the help that they've given us over the years. I would really like to thank the ones that are stepping down. We'll miss you guys. Keep your phones on because we're gonna be reaching out for advice, trust me on that. But that's, that's all I got. I guess if you got questions, we'll take them down.
Okay. Are there questions? Commissioner Bender, I would start with you if you have any comments.
No, I just wanna thank you guys. I mean, it's, it's great to have you here just as the reminder of the important service that you guys provide to everybody in Minnehaha County. And I know it's not easy, not without challenges, but we really appreciate the work you do.
Commissioner Benega, do you have any comments?
The only question I had, and again, I appreciate the services they provide, is there an update on the radio deliveries that we supported earlier this year?
Last I knew, Tim Even again, last I knew, there were some radios sitting at Sioux Falls Two Way. It was brought up at Chiefs Meeting last Wednesday night, that there are a number of them. They're waiting for some information from the state to be taken care of. And once that's done, I think they can install the code plugs and start getting some of the radios passed out to the departments. But that was the last I had heard on Wednesday night.
That's good news. Thanks, Tim.
Commissioner Barth, do you have any comments? Commissioner Barth has been the liaison for years to the ambulance, and so he knows this group well. I too want to say, I think that he may have stepped off. He's flying out today, so he was here for the, make sure we hit all of our motions in line. I'd also like to say you guys are kinda like the unsung heroes because nobody thinks about the ambulance providers until you need one right now. And as being a retired ICU nurse from many years ago, I recognize how important ambulances are, that they stabilize those patients before they got to the emergency room and before I saw them upstairs. And we had plenty of people that, you know, were saved just because And we had plenty of people that, you know, were saved just because of quick response on the very beginning, whether they were heart conditions or emergency accidents or whatever. So thank you so much for what you do, and we will continue to support as we can. So thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen is a helpline presentation. Janet, good morning.
Good morning. I'm here just to provide an update on Helpline Center. So do I control the slides or does somebody else control the slides? Oh, this one? Okay, perfect. Just scroll? All right. Perfect. All right. So I think everybody's familiar with Helpline Center, but just as a reminder, we have three core service areas. Our nine-eight-eight, our two-one-one volunteer connections also provide our suicide prevention training and suicide survivor support. And then we have some additional support programs, including our Helpline Center Network of Care. So just as a reminder, Helpline Center answers the nine-eight-eight phone number, which transitioned, yes, just past July sixteenth, used to be a one-eight-hundred number. National Suicide Prevention Lifeline became nine-eight-eight and also available through text and chat.
Janet, could you just say your name and your organization?
Sure. Janet Kidham, CEO of the Helpline Center.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. So in South Dakota, nine-eight-eight is answered by the Helpline Center. And we answer for the entire state. It's a partnership with the South Dakota Department of Social Services Division of Behavioral Health. They provide the overall guidance and planning and support, and the initial year of funding was supported by DSS. So just a couple of highlights with nine-eight-eight. We do follow-up phone calls, which is an important piece of nine-eight-eight. We do a whole series of follow-up calls once somebody has contacted us, either through phone, text, or chat, to continue to check in with them and make sure they're stabilized and connected with those community resources. We also partner with nine-one-one P-S apps across the state. And on my next slide, I'll talk a little bit more about what's going on here in Minnehaha County. And then on average, we stabilize about ninety percent of our phone calls without having to require other outside intervention. So nine-eight-eight overall was designed to partner with nine-one-one centers across the country. So the goal of the Helpline Center is to partner with every P-S app across the state. We have a great relationship with Metro Communications here in Minnehaha County. I've had one of the relationship with them for years. So we have an established MOU with them that allows calls to go back and forth between the two entities. We started piloting that last November, and it has been very successful. So what happens is when they receive a phone call at nine-one-one, that might be more appropriately handled by nine-eight-eight, behavioral health-related, mental health-related. If they're not in need of immediate intervention, they transfer the call directly on a specific phone line to my staff so my staff know that's coming from nine-one-one. And vice versa, we're able to transfer phone calls or request dispatch when we have a call that does need immediate response. So just quickly, we did not get rid of our other two-digit, our three-digit phone number. We still have two-one-one. Just as a reminder, that's more for community resources, basic needs, housing, food, financial assistance. And nine-eight-eight is behavioral health-related, substance use, mental health kinds of things. So very quickly, numbers that we have seen for two-one-one in Minnehaha County just within this year through October thirty-first, just about forty thousand contacts that we've had. Most of those have been calls, but we also do emails and texts with two-one-one. So the most common kinds of things we see are housing, food, household needs, and transportation. And we have a fantastic answer rate, which I just put up there, that we answer every phone call within seven seconds on average. So people do not wait on hold when they're asking for help. And then for nine-eight-eight, just since we started July fifteenth through October, so still new with nine-eight-eight, but we've had about seven hundred contacts in Minnehaha County specifically. Most of those have been calls, but we are receiving many chats and texts through nine-eight-eight. So overall, ninety-three percent of our calls, our contacts have been stabilized without outside intervention being requested or required. About fifty percent of the contacts that come in are crisis-related. So there is some type of immediate crisis that's happening with that person. Most common kinds of presenting concerns we've seen so far, depression, anxiety, a lot of family conflict. And then, of course, we've heard suicide is also up there. So that is a little bit about, and I should make note that all of our data is posted on our website. So if any person in the community ever wants to know what's happening with that data, you can just click on our website and find out two-one-one data and nine-eight-eight data. Just a little bit about impact within the community that we have. This is just an example of a call we answered, I think, just this past week, that a person who called us was looking for shelter for a nineteen-year-old young man and who was homeless, needed a place to stay. So we were able to connect them or her with resources to help him and also on some long-term housing. And she just shared how thankful she was, and she contacts two-one-one for a lot of the people that she helps and was appreciative of our services. And nine-eight-eight, this was a call that happened probably a month ago for us, just a young person who had called us. She dialed the nine-eight-eight as she was driving in her car, actually on her way back into Sioux Falls. And so had told my nine-eight-eight counselor that she had overdosed already, very hopeless, did not want to be around any longer, wanted to end her life. So my nine-eight-eight counselor was able to guide her off the road into a parking lot. And then simultaneously, my other nine-eight-eight counselor was able to contact emergency dispatch through nine-one-one and have them locate her and get to her immediately. So my other staff stayed on the line with her through the whole time until emergency dispatch was able to get there. She was losing consciousness, so we had to kind of keep talking with her to make sure she was still there for when the emergency providers got there. We do follow-up, as I talked about earlier. So we do know, we contacted afterwards, and that she was medically stabilized. And several days later was receiving mental health care. So she was doing much better. All right. And then just a reminder that our, one of our goals is to make sure we educate everybody about nine-eight-eight. So we have lots of resource materials available that people can access at no charge at our website by just going on and completing a simple form if you need magnets, posters, cards, whatever you might need with that. So I think that is everything, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you all for your support of the Helpline Center.
Thanks, Janet. Comments? Commissioner Bender?
I just wondered if you could help people understand your funding sources, where most of your funding comes from.
Yes, we have a combination of funding sources. Certainly, the state of South Dakota, the Department of Social Services is a supporter of nine-eight-eight and also of two-one-one. We also receive a variety of United Way funds here in Sioux Falls, the Sioux Empire United Way, but also a variety of United Ways across the state. We also receive foundation dollars through grants. And then we do our own fundraising events and private donations and corporate sponsorships.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Commissioner Benega?
Just fabulous work and significantly needed service to help people maintain or receive a quality of life. So thank you.
And just the transition that you guys did from two-one-one to nine-eight-eight, also a big lift, a very big lift. And so thank you. I think it's just, from my vantage point, it's been very seamless and as they continue to get the word out to people that nine-eight-eight is running. Is there any comments from the public? Okay, thanks, Janet.
Thank you.
Item number eighteen is the Children's Home Shelter for Family Safety Presentation.
Good morning. Amy Carter, Director with the Children's Home Shelter for Family Safety. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. I'll talk a little bit, and then I do have a guest with me as well. So let me slide here. So just a couple pretty significant program updates for us. Just a week ago today, we moved into our new facility. We had been on Western Avenue in a forty-bed, twenty-four-bedroom shelter since nineteen ninety-one. And that we had outgrown that building several years ago, but had to get some things in place before we could move into a new, larger facility. So we are now located at one-thirteen North St. Paul Avenue. Our new facility has thirty-eight bedrooms and ninety-six beds. And we, prior to moving, we were averaging about fifty-eight people a day in a forty-bed shelter. So we are confident that ninety-six beds will be enough for a while, but we also know that the need is there, and we will continue to see those beds get full. The other significant update for our program is that we changed our name from Children's Inn to the Children's Home Shelter for Family Safety. We have always, excuse me, since nineteen ninety-eight, Children's Inn has been under the umbrella of the Children's Home Society, but that connection was not always there. And so the opportunity with the new facility and the move, it also made sense to change our name and come more under that umbrella of Children's Home Society and be more comprehensive of the services we provide. Children's Inn was sometimes misunderstood by people, and so we're hoping our new name is a little more comprehensive. Just a quick reminder of the services we provide through our Shelter for Family Safety. Most known for our emergency shelter, we are the only emergency shelter for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, stalking, and child abuse in this five-county area. So we serve Minnehaha, Union, Turner, Lincoln, and McCook Counties. We also provide twenty-four-hour crisis intervention services. So we partner with two-one-one at different times as well, but we have individuals who reach out to us specifically in crisis related to domestic violence or child abuse or other forms of violence or abuse. And so we are able to connect with them either through phone or in-person contact, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. We offer counseling services, case management, parenting education, support groups, court advocacy, and community education. Really, the, we try to really surround individuals who are experiencing domestic violence or other forms of abuse with all of the services they might need. Kind of that one-stop shop in an effort to not only support them through their safe housing, if that's what they need, but also offer them crisis services and then other programs and services that can help them be successful, not only while they're staying with us, but after they depart. And so one of those individuals who benefited from our services is here with me today, Lisa Riddle. And I would just invite her up to talk a little bit of, so Lisa?
Thanks, Amy. Good morning. My name is Lisa Riddle. I am currently an assistant professor at the University of Sioux Falls. Thanks for welcoming me today to just share a few remarks on the vital role the Children's Inn, now named the Children's Home Shelter for Family Safety, played in my own life. To begin, I have never known a life outside of abuse. My arrival into the world was punctuated with violence as my mother endured physical, emotional, and mental abuse throughout her pregnancy at the hands of my father. I spent the first sixteen years of my life in survival mode, never thinking beyond the here and now. All of that changed one October evening when my mother and I escaped the prison in which we were living. That first brave step changed the trajectory of our lives, but I often think of how different our story might have been if the second step hadn't been available to us. When we left my father, we had no plans, no resources, no place to go. We went to the home of a family member, but it was clear that they didn't have the ability to keep us safe, provide the specific support we needed to heal physically and emotionally, nor could provide guidance on the next difficult steps we would need to take. In consultation with local law enforcement, it was suggested that we seek out shelter at the Children's Inn. We arrived with only the clothes on our backs, bruised and broken, and were welcomed by the kind face of a woman who guided us through the intake process. She sensitively allowed us to unburden decades of secrets and pain. After we were given time to settle into a room and rest, a worker documented and photographed our injuries with utmost, with the utmost dignity and respect. Over the next several weeks, numerous staff guided us through gaining a protection order, securing safe housing, coordinating instructional supports through my local high school, and providing a listening ear in the middle of the night when sleep eluded us and the nightmares came. Within two months, my mom and I had moved into an apartment, and she started a new job as we began to rebuild our lives one pebble at a time. As hard as that season was on both of us, I recognize how very different it might have been had the Children's Inn not been in existence at that time. Many communities across the United States don't have a facility, let alone the numerous services that are provided to people in my shoes. They often have nowhere to go except back to the abuse they want to flee. If that had been a reality for us, I'm convinced our story would be very different. I likely wouldn't be standing in front of you today. More likely, you would have seen my name and the name of my mother on a silent witness memorial, telling our tragic story of lives that ended too soon. But I am here today, and I get the opportunity to testify to you on behalf of all victims and survivors that our community cares. It has proven time and again by its generosity that everyone deserves dignity, safety. In Minnehaha County, you're not alone. There is a place of refuge in the Children's Home Shelter for Family Safety, and its doors and arms are open wide. I urge you to continue your legacy of partnership. I'm living proof that there is a return on your investment, and that investment changes people's lives. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa, for sharing.
I'll just add to Lisa a little bit. I had the pleasure several years ago of her mom and her just reaching out to me one day and sharing that they had stayed at Children's Inn many years ago. And I had the opportunity, they came in and we met, and we went through the facility. And they have been great partners and friends ever since. And as you can see, Lisa speaks very eloquently about her experience, and they are just amazing people that have overcome what so many people overcome. And thankfully, through the support of Minnehaha County, our service is able to be there to help them. So thank you, Lisa. I will just share a little bit more about some statistics here, if I can get there we go. You know, without a service like ours, I do feel very strongly that there would be a lot of lives impacted in a negative way, much like Lisa shared. And so you can just see here some comparison of previous years. The blue columns are Minnehaha County residents, and then the other columns are all individuals that we serve through our programs, our services. So we, through September of this year, we have sheltered eight-hundred-and-fifty-four individuals, six-hundred-and-forty-three being from Minnehaha County. That column that I've highlighted, the fourteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-one, that's the number of shelter days that we've seen already for this year and out of all areas. And you'll notice that's higher than the last two years, complete years, and we still have three months left of the year. So we have seen record numbers. I believe our shelter days are up about twelve percent over other years. So again, the need for our expanded building is just that much, much more illustrated here. And I'll just point out the second-to-last column, the days over capacity. So again, this year, just through September, we've been over capacity two-hundred-and-thirty-five days out of the year, and capacity being forty beds. Of course, now that'll change that we're in our new location, but up until this, it was in our forty-bed facility, we were over capacity the majority of the time. And then the last column I just wanted to highlight are all of the crisis intervention services we provide. So again, most people tend to think of us as a shelter, but we provide so much more. And the crisis intervention has really grown and continues to be a big part of what we do. That's individuals coming to our door or reaching out through the telephone for assistance. And that can be protection orders, it can be help with safety planning, people looking for resources for family members or for themselves. So really, us being able to provide that service does take that burden off of other programs and government entities and services in our communities. So it is something that we not only serve individuals, but it really does benefit the community as well. And then lastly, I would just share a little bit about our budget. So with the increase in size, we also added additional staff, about fourteen FTEs we did add to our services, or to our staffing. With that, so that, of course, increases our budget as well as the size of our building. We're going to have additional utility costs and things like that. So our overall budget increased by about one-point-two million from the previous year. And this just breaks down where the income for our budget comes from. So we have about twenty-seven percent coming from our different government funding sources. So we get some federal dollars specific to domestic violence programs that we apply for every year. We get a small amount of state funding, and that's more so in the form of contracts versus just funding. Some city and then county funding, not only from Minnehaha County, but from the four other counties that we serve as well. We also get United Way funding. And then you'll see the majority does come from other endowment and other fundraising efforts. So we are fundraising, or charitable dollars is supporting about sixty-two percent of our budget every year. So that's fairly significant through grants, foundations, fundraising events as well. So that gives you a little picture of how the funding breaks down at our program. That is all I had for today, unless anyone had any questions or comments.
Commissioner Bender?
I drive by your new building every day and watch the whole construction process. It's been very fun. So it's exciting that you guys are in there. We appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benega, do you have any comments?
No, I just appreciate Lisa's testimonial and Amy's, I guess, strength of leading that program. It's been awesome. It would be nice if it wasn't needed, but for those people who do need it, it's an incredible service. So thank you.
And I think if the sheriff was here, he would have wonderful things to say about you because without you, he has a difficult time knowing what to do with families and children in crisis. So it's been a huge help to our law enforcement also. So thank you for your presentation, and I have been to the building, and it's beautiful.
Yes, and I would like to extend that invitation to anyone who is here today if they're interested in touring and learning more about us, please just reach out.
Yeah, it's beautiful. Is there anyone in the audience with a comment? Okay, thanks. We will move on to item number nineteen, which is Sioux Metro Growth Alliance Presentation. Jesse?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commission, County Staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present this morning on the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. We really appreciate your support in 2022.
Your name.
It's Jesse Fonkert, President and CEO- It's Jesse Fonkert, President and CEO of the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. Thank you for the reminder. Sometimes I forget. We are very thankful for the support that Minnehaw County gives, the work that we do in rural communities across the county as well as the region. Quick overview of exactly what the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance is. We're a consolidated entity of Lakita-Makita, formerly known as Lincoln and Minnehaw County Economic Development Associations. Our mission is to empower communities to grow. We serve fifteen communities across the region. Our vision is through partnership, we help our members create opportunities for growth. It's all about empowerment, and our values state that. We're mindful, empowering, trustworthy, resourceful, optimistic. These are our five core values that we live and breathe every day and the work that we do in the towns that we serve. Our service territory has expanded since we were first created in ninety-one. We now serve some communities outside of Lincoln, Minnehaw County, Salem, and McCook County, and we're looking to expand into more rural communities in McCook County, and have been engaging folks in Turner County as well about some of their economic development needs. In 2021, we enhanced, we launched an enhanced membership where we provide staff support to communities for a annual fee. We've launched that service in Lennox and now expanded to five other communities. We serve Baltic, Darapitz, Harrisburg, Lennox, Salem, Worthing. That's allowed us to expand our staff. We have three staff, along with myself, that serve those towns. Each staff person serves two communities. We have a two-to-one split. We focus on two pillars of economic development. They are growth and engagement. Growth is the fun stuff, buildings, permits, development, projects, jobs. These are the things that fund government, right? We need that property tax revenue to help support government entities. And then for the communities, they need that daytime population to support sales tax growth. This is an extremely important part of economic development. To make growth possible, we have to have engagement. Engagement is the preparation side of economic development. This is working with leadership, educating them on how they can be more effective in economic development policy. This is strategic planning. We have recently launched a strategic planning-type service where we work with local economic development boards and chambers of commerce on helping them chart their path forward. We have a marketing program where we tell the story of the amazing businesses and leaders in our communities to folks across the region to help enhance the brand of those towns. And then community development, which is part of just a visioning process, we're going to be launching a new task force in January called the Community Readiness Assessment Program, which will be kind of a coalition of folks from our board that'll go into our communities and help provide guidance with it can be more competitive to attract both rooftops and businesses. These are the two pillars that we kind of, that we focus on for economic development. More so on the growth side, our big issue is finding sites for prospects across the region. Outside of Sioux Falls, the industrial land is limited, and many of our rural communities are not in a position to fund industrial parks by themselves. Historically, we've been part of some coalitions that have helped fund industrial parks, including the Corson Development Park outside of Brandon, which has been extremely successful. Our board is continually looking at ways to repeat that program. It's a very complex funding mechanism, but we know to be successful, we need to find ways to inject capital into those communities. And since many of the folks that live in our towns work in Sioux Falls, many of the jobs that we, that would typically support economic development or businesses that would support economic development in those towns are instead in Sioux Falls. And so it's, it's the plus and the minus of being a rural community in a growing metro. You're going to attract tons of rooftops, tons of families that want a rural lifestyle. The businesses that you need to support, your nonprofit activities, and your government are not always there. So connection is a huge part of the work that we do, and that capacity that goes along with that. To kind of go more into what we do on the engagement side, on marketing, we've launched two new partnerships in 2023. We'll be relaunching our magazine, our newsletter, which used to be a two-page newsletter. It's going to be more of a magazine now, telling what the lifestyle in our rural communities. We'll be focusing on Harrisburg in Q1, along with some of the smaller businesses across the region, to help tell the story of what it means to live rural in the Sioux Metro. We're also partnering with Southeast South Dakota Tourism Association in 2023. Tourism is an important part of economic development. It brings sales tax revenue to businesses, but also exposes people to new places where they might, at one point, find themselves calling home. Also on the marketing side, this year we launched a podcast, Growing Places, comes out every Tuesday morning for the most part, and we relaunched our e-newsletter, which is another effort of just telling the story of what it means to live rural. Some of the events that we host, of course, we have our amazing Minnehaw County Bus Tour, which we have a hard time topping every year, but we're going to keep finding ways to do that. We have some cool ideas for 2023 that we're working with county staff on. We've also launched a conference. This was year two of the conference. It focuses on economic development planning and strategy. We've launched a mayor's roundtable where we invite all the mayors from our region to meet once a month for lunch and talk about issues that they're facing. A lot of the discussions have focused on crime, so it's in the presentations today, I think, are timely. There's a lot of challenges out there, and I, for one of the Minnehaw County residents, appreciate all that you do to support the organizations that are helping people out there. And then, of course, we have to have a little bit of fun while we're working. We have a golf tournament that we host as well, and it rotates across the region. It'll be at Spring Creek in 2023. And then our annual meeting, which we have moved to the third Wednesday in March. So I hope you can attend that. I'm going to go again on capacity. You've heard me talk about capacity before in front of this commission. Utilities are a big challenge across the region, mostly on the water and wastewater side. We have some great partners in the natural gas world and the power world that have ample supply. But water and wastewater do cause quite a bit of concern for our organization as we want to attract more rooftops and businesses to the region. You've heard me talk about that a few times, and we've had a similar conversation with your counterparts in Lincoln County. We're working on regionalizing some of these efforts. Water has been regionalized, for the most part, in Minnehaw County, but wastewater has yet to be regionalized. And we think there's an opportunity to make that happen if we can get all the players to come together and help make that a possibility, which in our opinion could help unlock hundreds of acres for development as well, thus further easing the tax burden on our taxpayers. Housing is still a huge challenge across the region on the affordable side, and as well as step up housing and executive homes. There's plenty of demand. Even with an increase in interest rates, we're still seeing quite a bit of demand in our rural communities. And I repeat again, daytime population makes it extremely challenging for municipal governments to be effective in our region because they can't collect sales tax to what they could be if they were, say, out of, in a different zone. Before we talk about industrial parks, I'll skip that. Goals for 2023, looking to continue to enhance our communication strategy, we'll be hiring a director of engagement here in December to help us with our marketing efforts, but also our fundraising efforts. We really think that there's an opportunity for us to come along with our partners across the region to option land, to help create industrial park models with the private sector. We're going to be exploring that. So we're going to be relaunching a business retention and expansion program, or BRNE for short, which is where we go into key employers across the region, engage how business conditions are with their organization, and if we can help them expand or retain their business. And we'll be continuing to engage more with McCook and Turner County leadership. We think there's a lot of opportunity to help those communities grow in those two counties, as more and more folks are looking for rural lifestyles. Before we talk about community readiness assessments, and then industrial and central capacity as well. This is a very high-level view of what our organization does. I was impressed with the budget numbers that you guys provided. I got to put that in my slide next year. But we're funded mostly by public dollars with our municipalities. They pay based on population. And in 2023, we're really going to be focusing on and engaging more with the private sector. Questions you have for me, what I can do for you?
Thanks, Jesse. I'm going to start with you.
I don't. Thank you. Good presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Benega, do you have any comments?
No, I'm familiar with this organization. I was very impressed. A couple weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go to a groundbreaking in Crooks, and it was the partners that they had and the success that that community has had is incredible. People need to go see what they've done, that's for sure.
I agree. I'm from out in Crooks area, and I happened to have the opportunity to fly over when I was flying back into Sioux Falls a couple weeks ago, and it's really impressive from up above. A lot of great things happening in Crooks, and that's because of good leadership there and here in your organization. So we're excited about the continued growth of your, of the work that you're doing, and because it does affect us, we need more rooftops. And in order to have more rooftops, you need to have those businesses to go along with it, and we need the infrastructure. So somebody leading those ways so the commission doesn't have to do it is great.
And we appreciate your support, because indirectly you are leading those efforts through us. So we thank, we thank you for that.
Yep. Thanks, Jesse. Any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our next one.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, too.
This is the opportunity for public comment, if there's anyone who has not spoken about something they would like to bring forward. Okay, seeing none, I would look for liaison reports. Can anyone have one? I have a couple. Okay, so last night, Commissioner Bender and Commissioner Barth and myself all attended the Towns and Township Meeting. We weren't there for the whole thing, because I think they usually go pretty long, but a good turnout to that meeting. They were impressed with our great new room. But yes, good meeting of very dedicated people who volunteer their time on the Towns and Township Board. I admitted mentioning a couple weeks ago that I attended our local conference. It's a community engagement conference, which was November third, with our Safety and Justice Challenge Grants that we received from the MacArthur Grant. We host yearly a community engagement conference, and it's mostly for the providers and staff in this area and the people that work with that Safety and Justice Challenge. We had a really good turnout again. It's a day-long event here in Sioux Falls. We talked about implicit bias and trauma. We had Urban Indian, who is partnering with us to Urban Indian Health, and they talked about a new program that they're working on, which will be partially funded by grant funding, which is woh-woh-ye, woh-woh-ye. I probably didn't say it quite right. I'm trying, and, which means helper. And that program is similar to our mobile crisis team, and as they put that program together, it's already very successful under a different name in Pennington County, and we're hoping they will continue to see the, for the success in Minnehaw County as they get that program going. It's out meeting people where they're at in the community, trying to avoid those law enforcement contacts. And so they're working on that project with help from their partners. We also heard interviews from some of our Justice Impact people who went through the Leaders of Tomorrow program. Those are incredibly inspiring, very exciting, the program that's been supported by the Safety and Justice Challenge. And they will be having a graduation on December eighth through that organization, and I'm graduating a bunch more people who've gone through that program and also have another Justice Impacted Leaders of Tomorrow program starting in January. Those are also quite exciting programs. They do have videos posted on their website of some of the people who've gone through that program. If you're further interested, I'm sure we could get you that information on how to find those videos. We talked about the community engagement that we've done through the Safety and Justice Challenge and got an update on that. I do have a slide presentation that I've asked to be emailed to me, and I will email those out to the commission staff, so they can see on paper a lot of the projects that the Safety and Justice Challenge has done. And then I would say Commissioner Bender and I also attended this past week a Safety and Justice Challenge community, or committee meeting, and just talked through a bunch of the projects that we're doing currently. Again, some of the stuff that was presented at the convention, also our recent trip to Tucson, Arizona, which I spoke about last week, and then some of the moving forward steps that we have to take as a result of our trip to Tucson and some of the other work we're doing for Safety and Justice. So with that, I think that's my whole report. Commissioner Bender, or Benega, do you have any liaison reports?
No, no, not right now.
Okay. Then I would look for if there is any non-actionable commission discussion. And I don't see staff moving, so there is none. So I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Roque Vault, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.